Good evening. I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, September 8th, 2021. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Thank you to SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah and Liz Poploski for their assistance with these broadcasts. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, September 22nd. Before we start tonight's meeting, I would like to acknowledge that we are all unmasked and six feet apart, as well as vaccinated, just in case anybody was curious. Our first item on the agenda is public participation. Tonight, nobody has expressed interest in addressing the committee, however, in the future. If anyone wishes to participate in this portion of our meeting, they should contact the chairperson prior to the beginning of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is chairperson and members' reports. Colleagues, any things to report?
If I can, thank you so very much. I would just like to thank all of our colleagues in the schools for what has been a successful start of school year. As many people know who listen, my children span three of our schools, and I have to say, their surprising level of enthusiasm for getting back to school, particularly for my older ones, getting back to normal. Last year, the middle school had suspended all sports, so it was my first time my son could actually participate in Shrewsbury Athletics, was cross-country today, and he was nice and tired when he got home. But getting back to a sense of normalcy, and I think what I really appreciate is the dedication it takes by so many individuals to follow all of the protocols and rules in order to make that happen and keep that going. So, to the administration, but particularly our staff and parent community, thank you for really setting the example. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. I would like to begin with a special opening. Typically, for this first regular meeting of the school year, we will have the Shrewsbury High School Acappella Choir join us in order to perform the National Anthem. And given the circumstances this year, we don't have them in person, but I did want to share with the community the recording of the National Anthem that they performed at the opening staff assembly. And I will run through the video in a moment, so if Mr. LaRue can cue that up, and we will have our National Anthem to start off our proceedings for the year. So I want to thank Mr. LaMichael Apomardo, the Director of the Choral Program at Shrewsbury High School, and our Acappella Choir. And perhaps at some point later in the year, we'll be able to have them perform in person. We'll see how things go with that. But again, we appreciated them starting off our opening exercises for our staff back last Monday. Would also just like to talk a little bit about, in our opening report, about the start of the school year, which has been very, very successful. I do want to give a special thanks to everyone who helped make this possible. In particular, I'd like to thank, you know, the school buildings look terrific, our custodians and our Public Buildings Division. Colleagues did an outstanding job getting things ready, as well as our contract cleaning companies. Unlike the reality in some other places, our bus transportation services have gone extremely well. Thank you to our partner, AA Transportation, who's been our school bus vendor for a long time. Certainly, our families did an outstanding job preparing their students to be ready to come into this, what is still not a typical school year, and we felt our students were very well-prepared. And certainly, all of our colleagues here, our secretaries and clerical support staff, our food service staff, the IT support staff, our extended school care staff, our paraprofessionals, our nurses, our educators, and our administrators, all worked extremely hard to make this an excellent opening of school under what continue to be some challenging circumstances. So, again, my appreciation to all those folks, and we'll look forward to sharing some specifics about the opening of the school year in our first report this evening.
Great.
That is superintendent's report.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions or comments? No? Okay. Onto the next item on our agenda, which is opening of the 2021-2022 school year and pandemic response. We'll hand it back to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you very much. The primary goal that we have this year is to provide full-time, in-school learning for students with minimal disruptions, while using mitigation strategies to minimize the risk of contracting COVID-19 as we continue to manage our way through this pandemic. And that's a goal that we are very committed to achieving because of the importance of in-person school for our students' well-being. Our approach is to, of course, with health and safety being top of mind, implementing mitigation strategies that reduce the risk of transmission of the virus that causes COVID-19. We are very focused on creating a sense of belonging within our schools for all of our students, so that they feel that unconditional acceptance that creates the kind of learning environments we need, so that we can support and we're committed to supporting their social, emotional, and mental health needs. And we're committed to providing learning opportunities that support students' academic needs. And those academic needs are going to be different. Some students thrived over the past year and a half, others struggled, and there's lots in between. And we are working to meet students where they are and to move them ahead appropriately in terms of their academic growth. And that's something, of course, that we can't do well unless we're paying attention to their social and emotional needs as well. So those are all connected. In order to do this work, of course, under the circumstances of the pandemic, and what a lot of people are interested in, and what we see in the media all the time, is the issue, the continued issues related to COVID in schools. And I think it's important to provide those who are watching, again, a sense of context where we are as a state, where we are locally. And then Ms. Noel Freeman, our Director of School Nursing, will talk again around some of the approaches we're using in order to mitigate the chance of the spread of the virus. First off, this is a visual that we've been using for well over a year now, thanks to Johns Hopkins Coronavirus Restore Center. As of today, and this is updated pretty much daily by Johns Hopkins, Massachusetts has the lowest seven-day positivity rate when it comes to COVID testing in the nation. It's at 2.26%, so it's well below the 5% threshold that Johns Hopkins references, related to the World Health Organization's threshold, where society should consider whether or not they're providing or creating restrictions if you're above a 5% rate, depending on the context, of course. But it's very reassuring to see that Massachusetts has the lowest positivity rate in the United States currently. Another doc or visual, next slide, is about, from the Massachusetts Interactive Dashboard that you can find on the Massachusetts Mass.gov coronavirus page. This is just to give a sense of where cases are by age over the past two-week period. This was published as of September 8th, according to the website today. And you can see, of course, they break it down mainly by decades. The younger people, they break down into groups of five years, but if you add those up, you can still see that the largest number of cases are ages 20 to 29, and followed by ages 30 to 39. And you see that, you know, ages 10 to 19 is at about 2,700, ages 0 to 9 is at about 2,300, in terms of confirmed cases in the state by age. So, you know, certainly, younger students or younger citizens not have as many cases as those who are in those other age brackets. We also want to be paying attention to what the impact is, of course, and one way to measure that is to look at hospitalization rates. And the next slide indicates that, on a, essentially, a rate per 100,000 people in the population by age bracket, you can see that the lowest rates of hospitalization are for young people. Those ages 0 to 11 years, it is a 0.5 per 100,000 rate of hospitalization. Ages 12 to 17, it's 1.6. And ages 18 and 19, it's 3 per 100,000. So extremely low rates of hospitalization. You can see, unfortunately, the highest rates are those for the most elderly in the population here in the Commonwealth. So again, that's another sense of state context. We also have local context. One sense of that is what's our local positivity rate? It's 2.34%. So again, very, very good compared to the 5% benchmark. This is for the weeks of August 14th through 28th. That's the last date of the state published on that coronavirus interactive website. Another piece of local context is the actual case counts in the town of Shrewsbury by week. And the town of Shrewsbury reports these out on Fridays. So the week ending Friday, August 13th, there were 21 cases. At the time, because we were able to see Shrewsbury Public School students within the Maven system, there were three Shrewsbury Public School students that week who tested positive. The following week, it went up to 32 cases across the entire town. Four of those cases were Shrewsbury Public School students. The following week, it stayed pretty much steady, 33 cases and six within the schools. The week ending September 3rd, there was an uptick from 33 to 46 cases here in town. Seven of those cases were Shrewsbury Public School students. And the town has not reported yet for this week. They'll report at the, late on the day on Friday. But so far this week, we've had eight cases in the schools. So we're trending very proportionally with the number of cases in town. Unfortunately, the number of cases here within our community is low. And just to give some more context for the number of student cases, that bottom line there, we have about 6,070 students in the school district. I'm not sure if you can see that on that particular slide, but out of 6,070 students, that ranges from about 5,000ths of 1% to 13,000ths of 1% in terms of positivity, when you talk about seven or eight students out of a total of over 6,000. So it's important to keep that in context. The next slide gives the current case count, and as people were used to, last year, we would report out cases on a week-by-week basis. This week to date, up through today, we've had seven cases. We've had three cases where the individual was in school during an infectious period. We didn't talk about this that much last year. I think this year, when we're talking about a lot of the differences in quarantining rules, and Ms. Freeman will speak to that in a moment, I think it's important to recognize that that's one of the layers of protection. And so this week, of those seven cases, four of them either were not in school at all since the school year began, because they'd been in quarantine, because they were close contact of a family member who may have contracted it, or they were positive during, when they were at school last week, but when they actually became infectious was just in the last day or two, and it didn't require us to do contact tracing because they were not considered to be in their infectious period. Zero cases have been traced to possible exposure in school. And cumulatively, from the first day of school, which was September 1st, and we had two days of school last week, we've had 12 total cases. Five of those were when a student was during that infectious period in school, and again, zero traced to possible exposures. They're all clearly connected to some kind of exposure that they had outside of school. On a school-by-school basis, you can see the numbers there. This is cumulative to the start of school. This is total cases, whether they were in school or not. So you can see how those 12 cases are broken down. Some of our schools have not had any yet. And then the next slide, again, references the fact that, and I apologize that it's not showing up on the screen there correctly, but there were zero cases at any of our elementary schools or preschool where students were infectious period, one at Sherwood, one at Oak, and three at Shrewsbury High School, for a total of five. In terms of mitigation strategies, I'll turn it over to Ms. Freeman, and she will take those watching through what we're doing and some of the nuances this year relative to quarantining.
Thanks, Dr. Sawyer. So just a quick review of the mitigation strategies we're using again this year. These were in place since we came back to school last fall. So we are again having all students and staff mask while in school or on the bus. You are probably aware that there are state mandates around masking in school, at least through October 1st, and there are federal mandates in place for public transportation that includes school buses. So we will be reevaluating those things as we get guidance from state and federal authorities and watching all the statistics about what's going on in Shrewsbury. Hand hygiene, hand washing, and hand sanitizing are always good to have in place, whether there's a pandemic going on or not. So just, we're, you know, helping remind kids that hand washing is important and having them do that throughout the day. Distancing is being done differently this year. So last year, we had definite distances between desks six feet at the beginning of the year and three feet in the spring. The guidelines now say three feet when possible. And I just add it in pragmatic, there are times in school where it just makes more sense to have people at a closer distance in order for good instruction to be happening. So all those things are being taken into consideration when we look at distancing. Ventilation, the systems are up and running in all of our buildings, and we're encouraging people to keep windows open as much as possible as well. Next is staying home if sick. This is definitely as important as it ever has been. I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail about the screen, what symptoms are involved in the screening that we're asking people to do before they come to school. Voluntary routine COVID safety checks, what we used to call surveillance testing, or pool testing. We have been approved to participate in the state-sponsored program this year, and we are working on getting that up and running. I will provide a little bit more detail on that as well. And then quarantining, contact tracing, when a positive case is identified in the school population, which I will also talk more about. So this is the COVID-19 symptom list. It's very similar to last year in that all of the same symptoms are there, but they have updated it to be a little bit more specific about the symptoms themselves. So the symptoms that are in bold here are considered standalone symptoms. So if you have one of those four symptoms, just that alone will require you to be sent home if you're in school, or please stay home if you are at home and you are experiencing those symptoms. And then we would require follow-up with a provider and probable COVID testing in order to return to school. The symptoms that are not bolded are considered significant when they're in combination with another symptom. So any two of those, for example, if you had a sore throat and a headache, that would require you to be dismissed and be evaluated and tested before returning to school. But just a sore throat alone last year would have sent you home. This year, there's a little bit more leeway and room for some nursing and medical judgment on individual symptoms. So contact tracing happens when a case of COVID-19 is identified in either a staffer or student in one of our buildings. So it's important to note, like Dr. Sawyer mentioned, that contact tracing doesn't occur for every case. That happens in the school community. We need to contact trace when that individual has been in school during their infectious period, and that is the two days prior to symptom onset, if the person has symptoms and goes and gets tested. Or their positive test date, if they're tested as, for example, a close contact and they don't have any symptoms to count back to, then their positive test date is the day zero. So we look back two days from there. If that person was in school during those two days, then contact tracing is put into motion. So that positive individual automatically needs to isolate for 10 days from either their symptom onset or their test date. And the school nurses begin contact tracing to determine who the close contacts would be. The definition of close contacts is being within six feet for 15 minutes or more of the positive individual while indoors. So outdoor contact is considered safe and not included in contact tracing anymore. So this process determines who needs to quarantine or not. And I have to give kudos to all of my nurses, who became quite proficient at contact tracing last year. And they're still really good at it, but it feels like now the rules have, they've changed the rules of the game. Because, as I'm going to show you on the next slide, there are now exemptions to quarantine. So it used to be a little bit more straightforward. If you were in that six feet for 15 minutes or more, you were a close contact and you followed a certain protocol. Now there are exemptions, which is a good thing, because we're having to quarantine less people, but it does make it a little bit more complicated. So the exemptions that we can consider are anyone who's been vaccinated and fully vaccinated, so they've had both doses of one of the two-shot regimens or one dose of the J&amp;J, and at least 14 days has passed since their final dose in the series. So those people who are fully vaccinated and have no symptoms do not need to quarantine. So we let them know, basically, that you were in the close proximity to this person, so please keep an eye on your symptoms and let us know if you develop any, but you do not need to quarantine. And there's no requirement for them to be tested either. Individuals who are masked and three or more feet away, so this is where this three-to-six-foot distancing comes in. This came out in the spring last year as an exemption. There was, there were various studies done, one of which, a large study was done in schools in Massachusetts last year, looking at the difference in transmission rates where kids were six feet distance or three feet distance. And they found that there really wasn't a difference in the transmission rates, as long as both parties were masked, both the person who tested positive and their contacts. So people in that situation, where both people are masked and they're at least three feet away, and less than six feet, again, are exempt from quarantine. So we let the individual or the student's parents know that they fall into this category, they don't need to quarantine, but to please keep an eye on symptoms. Individuals who are on the bus with masks on, which is required, and windows open, are exempt from quarantine. That's not a contact tracing area at this point. And then individuals who have had COVID-19 in the past 90 days are exempt from quarantine because they're considered to have some immunity when they're that close to having had the actual disease. So next, we thought it might be helpful to share just a couple of quick examples of contact tracing that has happened with some recent cases in the last two weeks, to kind of show you what, how those exemptions that I just talked about have affected contact tracing for people. So last week, we had an individual at Oak Middle School who tested positive. The nurses contact traced six classrooms, because at Oak, kids move around, their team and their allied arts, and so they're in multiple locations. And then, of course, they're at lunch, so we looked at that as well. So 21 contacts were identified. Three of them were required to quarantine because they were at less than that three-to-three-foot distance with masks on, or they were within six feet without a mask, which may have happened at lunch. One of the close contacts in this category was at lunch, and they're not vaccinated. So at Oak Middle School, most students are eligible for vaccination, so that is definitely a factor for contact tracing there. 10 of the contacts were exempt because they were in that three-to-six-feet. Everybody had a mask on, so they did not have to quarantine, and eight of the contacts were fully vaccinated, so they did not have to quarantine. So this really kind of shows the importance of us having kids wear masks so that we can avoid quarantine at the three-foot mark, and being vaccinated, if you're eligible, also gives you the benefit of not missing school due to quarantine. And our second example was at Sherwood this week, and this does kind of highlight the difference, because if you think about the kids at Sherwood, most of them are not 12 yet, so they don't have the option. They're not eligible to be vaccinated. So this case involved contact tracing in just two classrooms. Typically, it would be more, but because it was the first couple of days of school, they had the kids more just in their homerooms and didn't have them traveling around as much as they do typically. So it included just two classrooms and lunch for this particular case. They identified seven contacts that required quarantine because they were, yeah, less than three feet masked or less than six feet unmasked. Five of those were at lunch, and two of them were in a classroom situation. Eight of the contacts were able to be exempted because they had their masks on at that three-feet distance or more, and there were, unfortunately, none who were eligible to be exempted from quarantine because of vaccination. So hopefully, we will see that vaccine approved for younger kids soon. We're all anxiously awaiting that. And I should note that any of the close contacts that have been tested in either of those cases to date have tested negative, so we have not, as Dr. Sawyer said, we have not seen any in-school spread at this point. Just a quick review of the test-and-stay protocol. So this is going to be an option for people who fall into the category of not being exempt and needing to quarantine. It only applies to close contacts that happen in school. So if a student or staff person is exposed to COVID outside of school, test-and-stay will not be an option for them, but if their exposure happens in school, this will be an option that families can choose for their student if they would like to. So again, it's going to, we'll make it available as soon as we can through the state testing program, who we're working with currently. Anyone who would like to participate in this is going to need to consent to the testing program, and that more information about that went out to staff today and will be going out to families soon. The process would involve, an individual who's identified as needing to quarantine would be allowed to come to school. They would report to the nurse's office when they arrive. They would be tested with a Binax Now Rapid Antigen Test, which is a nasal swab that takes about 15 to 30 minutes to about 15 to 30 minutes to give us a result. As long as the student has no symptoms and that test is negative, they are allowed to stay in school for the day. And then you repeat that process each day through day seven of their exposure. So on average, kids would probably need to do this kind of testing four or five days in school to get to that day seven, depending on when their last exposure to the individual And there is a process for students who would be participating in athletics, for example, if there were an event over the weekend. This testing can happen for those students over the weekend, but only for students participating in an event. It wouldn't be, other kids who don't have an event would be asked to just quarantine at home if the weekend falls in that seven-day period. And for people who choose not to test and stay, or at this point, it's not a choice. So these are the options for quarantine. These have been in place since December of 2020 through the Department of Public Health. So there's basically three options. The quickest kind of route to return to school is the first one, which is you test on day five after your exposure, five or later. And then if you have a negative test and you have no symptoms, you can return to school on day eight. So in that case, kids are usually missing, I would say, on average, three or four days of school. Again, it just depends when your day of exposure falls compared to when we get the positive test result, and there can be some lag time there. If a family chooses not to have their student tested and the person is asymptomatic, has no symptoms, they can return on day 11 after exposure without being tested as long as they have no symptoms. And then if there are any symptoms during quarantine, people need to complete that full 14-day period regardless of a negative test if they do have symptoms. So that's kind of the longest that someone would be out is 14 days from their exposure And the other part of this state testing program that I just wanted to give people an update on, again, this is what we called last year "pool testing." It's kind of been rebranded as COVID safety testing this year. And so it will be completely voluntary. All staff and students are eligible to participate, and we certainly encourage participation. The more people who do this testing, the better idea we have of the prevalence in the community. It will just require that a new consent be signed. People who signed a consent for the program last year will need to do a new consent for this year's program. And we are working with the state team to get this up and running as soon as possible. We're hoping by the end of the month. We're just working out the details. It will be a take-home test like we had last year, so people will pick up their test kit at school on one day and do the test the following morning at home and return the test kit. And usually, we have results within about 24 to 48 hours from test drop-off. And that's it for me. Are we doing questions now or at the end?
Why don't we take a pause now, if that's okay? While we have Noel here, if there's any questions about any of the protocols and those kinds of things, and then Mr. Collins will talk about some of the operational pieces with the opening of school.
Sure. Colleagues, any questions for Ms. Freeman?
That was very clear, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Give you a little bit of an update on some of the operational aspects of the school reopening. First, as has been reported in the media, and I think Dr. Sawyer mentioned at the outset, that clearly we know that there's a shortage of school bus drivers nationally and statewide. We've been very fortunate in Shrewsbury, where our provider, AA Transportation, has been able to maintain their driver and monitor staffing at very high levels. There was only one permanent position for a driver that was open at the beginning of the year, and AA Transportation is working very actively. You might have seen maybe even some billboards on Route 290 that they have taken out to advertise along with some radio time. So we're in a very, very good position with our staffing through our contractor for school bus drivers. So we're not experiencing problems that other Massachusetts or other states are experiencing with lack of drivers and lack of routes and, you know, parents having to drive where they wanted to otherwise put their kid on the bus. A separate topic, and Ms. Freeman mentioned this, that there is a national mandate for masking on all public transportation. Folks that are, you know, either been in airplanes over summer vacation, or trains, or public busing will know that they've been required to wear a mask, and so that also applies to school buses. That is a federal mandate. And at the same time, and this has been a question that's been posed to us with some frequency at the outset here about the ridership, there is no social distancing restrictions or caps either. So we've gone to full capacity with all of our busing because we've had to based upon the demand for ridership. So there is no social distancing. There's no three-foot requirement. There's no six-foot requirement. We're running routes with full capacity based upon the capacity of seating on the bus. So there's no social distancing. We also continue to have the contractor have the windows cracked on buses for increased airflow. So those are some of the pieces around kind of the big picture of school transportation. With respect to ridership, as usual, we've, we set a deadline of June 30th for school bus registration for the upcoming school year. We did get a late start for taking registrations because of the operational override vote, which was on May 4th, and we weren't quite sure about funding for lots of things, including the opening of the new school and redistricting and all of those things. So we really couldn't ask people to sign up for busing until that event occurred. So we got a bit of a late start, but by June 30th, there were just over 3,500 students registered for busing, and as of today, there's just about, just under 4,000. So between, you know, July 1st and the opening of school, there was 490 new bus registrations after the deadline. Now clearly, some of those were new students, but most of them were not. They were late registrations. And just between the time period of August 17th in the school opening, there were 264 new bus registrations. So clearly, when it comes to school transportation, you know, ridership, it's all about ridership and who you need to pick up. And this is what causes every year, not just this year, but a perennial problem is the late registrations and having to add students and add additional bus stops or extend the route to another street where you didn't think you would have to go before. And what it does is it basically causes changes for all the other students on the bus because now the route has changed. You've either added time, you're getting picked up earlier, or you're getting picked up later as a result of that. So it's really not a transportation problem. It's a registration problem. And I'm certainly open to anybody's ideas about how to solve that perennial problem of people registering late. But also, just in terms of ridership, in addition to the about 4,000 students attending Shrewsbury Schools who we're transporting, we have just over 200 riders registered for services for all of our private schools and Assamit Valley Vocational Technical High School. So where are we now? We're about 5% below our pre-pandemic ridership levels, which is actually higher than I expected. And that's, I think, a really good thing because we do have pressure at all of our schools with, some more than others, with traffic problems, which I'll talk a little bit about more later. So overall, I would say that the, you know, performance and execution of the plan was well-done by our contractor. You know, we're operating 246 different bus routes on a daily basis, transporting just over 4,200 kids twice daily. And this is just a picture of students at Floral arriving in the morning at Floral. And, you know, typically, at the beginning of the year, I'll visit the schools and, you know, just make sure things were operating okay. And I have to say, without exception, all of our students are adhering to the masking mandate on buses, and it's really good to see, and you can see that here in the picture as well, along with the bus driver. I think that, let's see, the next slide. In terms of congestion, which I mentioned earlier, you know, we do have volume, you know, we've got a compressed period of time. We still have lots of parents driving their students. We have some very constricted or restricted sites with passenger traffic, you know, especially at Oak Middle School. And I would say also, you know, the New Beale School, I know Mr. Girardi, I think he mentioned he had close to or about 200 cars for parent pickup, which is about a third of the school population. The school was designed with a very large, you know, extended ring road, if you will, to kind of plan for that eventuality, but still, that it takes a lot of time to get 200 kid carding through grade-four students called to a car and in the car and then moved on. And so we are still experiencing, you know, issues with delays in terms of getting kids into the parent pickup and drop-off lines. So as a result, I want to make sure that parents know that we still have capacity on our buses, and school bus registration does remain open. And, you know, our, our execution, while overall was very good, it's not perfect. It has never been perfect. And so we're still working on fixing some of the issues that need to be fixed. And, you know, when you have that many changes and that new, new late registrations, you basically have to reprint routes for the bus drivers almost on a daily basis and add kids and point out to them that the new students that are riding and if there's a new bus stop to be incorporated. So those things were going to take a couple of weeks to shake, shake out. But again, overall, I think things have gone well at the outset of the school year. I do want to definitely express my gratitude for our new Assistant Finance Operations Manager, April Yu, who is extremely attentive to parent inquiries and emails and telephone calls, which we were really inundated with in the last several weeks. And also, that AA Transportation, I would consider very much a business partner and not just a contractor. They really work, you know, to help solve our problems quickly, so I'm grateful for them as well. Moving on to food service, you know, we have reverted back to, well, I want to start off first with the, meals are free again for this school year, like they were last year. So the federal government has decided to fund school lunch programs nationally, again, regardless of income levels. So school lunches and school breakfasts, where we offer it, which is at Coolidge Elementary School, the middle schools and the high school for breakfast, are free for the entire year for all students. We still have to maintain all the nutritional meal requirements as part of the USDA National School Lunch Program. We have to serve students a complete meal with all the nutritional components. It's not just free food, take what you want. We have to serve what's called a required meal, if you will. And we have to submit meal counts on a monthly basis in order to get reimbursed by the federal government and the state government, so we have to keep track of all that information. Another question that kind of came up was kind of this notion that parents thought, well, lunch is free, well, maybe snacks are free, I get free snack. And that's not the case. So, you know, especially our elementary schools have encouraged students to bring a snack every day. Those must be provided by families and parents. Those are not provided by the school. Those are not free. And right now, we're not selling à la carte items. We don't have cash registers open. We, we hope to do so maybe in the near future, but we're not offering that at this particular time. We want to get the school year rolled out first and get people kind of set back in their patterns. So we've gone back to also kind of the pre-pandemic typical menu, if you will. You can see this is a picture of Spring Street School, students getting their lunch on the tray. That was a, I think that was a pancake lunch today. I took a picture of Spring Street School. And then also, so you have a hot lunch option, and then students at all schools still have an option for a cold, so-called brunch bag, which typically has like a yogurt, bagel, milk juice, and a piece of fruit. So we're offering both right now and not just the bagged lunch option that we had all last school year. During the food service time, social distancing is not required, and we have so-called reclaimed all of our gymnasiums that we had to take over last year just to provide that social distancing. So we're very happy to provide kind of a full and robust physical, physical education program in that also the gymnasiums can be used by extended school care programs now, before and after school. Also during lunchtime, our HVAC systems are maximized running for air circulation, and where we can open the windows, that is occurring as well. In terms of, kind of another related piece, is that clearly we offer lots of fee-based programs. I know Mrs. Heffernan talked about the Oak Athletic Program, and, you know, that's a fee-based program, as is busing, extended school care. And we do have, you know, reduced discounted pricing. And the means test that we use, kind of the universal means test in the district to measure whether or not somebody's eligible for a discount, is if you're eligible for free or reduced lunch. Now, obviously, it sounds a little counterintuitive, lunch is free for everyone, but the standard free and reduced lunch application is still kind of a valid means test, if you will, and it's based upon a family's income. And families need to apply and reapply every year for that program. And so if families are struggling and while they're getting a free lunch without having to do that, but maybe they can't afford the bus or athletic program, they need to go to our website, which is on this next page here, you know, under our food service program, Free and Reduced Lunch Application. Fill out that application, and if they're eligible, found to be eligible, then going forward, they'd be eligible for discounts for all of our fee-based programs. So I want to really encourage parents to still continue to use that. And of course, during the school year, you know, parents might experience unemployment or a change in income in their household, and they can certainly go there at any time during the year, fill out this application. Moving on to facilities and grounds, I know Dr. Sawyer mentioned at the outset that Public Buildings Division provided lots of support to us to get our schools reopened, and I couldn't echo that enough. Really appreciate all of their efforts. And, you know, some of this stuff falls into the category of normal stuff, like cleaning, inspections, but there are also other maintenance projects, which I'm going to cover some of those here. I think it's important for the community to know also that the Public Buildings Department coordinates the schedule and works with the Fire Department and the Building Inspector to complete annual life safety inspections at all of our schools before schools open. And each school principal gets a checklist of that inspection of any things that need, anything that needs to be rectified before school opening. And all of the life safety systems are tested. We have firefighters come in, they're testing, testing all of the emergency lights, the fire alarm, pole system, all of that gets tested. Next slide. These are some of the major projects, and I know that, you know, Angela Snell and Keith Baldinger especially were involved in contracting or completing for all of these things. I won't read through all of these. You can see the list here. You can see the list here. It's pretty extensive and covers many of our schools. Lots of boiler work, some window work up at the high school, HVAC system recommissioning, and some roof work at Sherwood and Oak. And also, I do want to mention, again, on the cleaning end, Ken Goodwin, who's a custodial supervisor, who supervises all the kind of heavy cleaning, and Kevin Esposito, who works on all of our playgrounds as well, to make sure that they are safe and inspected every year before school opens. Some of the logistics, we had, because of the pandemic, had to de-densify and pull out a lot of furnishings in our schools. We had 17 tractor trailers loaded and staged up at the high school parking lot. Between the springtime and school opening, 13 of those, excuse me, 14 of those 17 were offloaded. We only have three remaining up at the high school during the summertime and springtime. And we did get some contract workers to help us offload some of those things at schools and also in some warehouse space in Worcester. And I do want to give a shout out to Chacharone Family and Mel Chacharone, who helped us with that warehouse space and provided free warehouse space this springtime and summertime to the school district, which is very valuable and will continue to use for the upcoming school year as well. And then also, there was just so many minute details in terms of furnishings. Student desks needed to come back, cafeteria tables, just lots of rearranging, lots of teacher moves between schools because of redistricting. And all of our school building principals and assistant principals worked really tirelessly to put together lists to make sure each and every classroom was outfitted with exactly the right furniture that was needed to kind of have this redistricting occur K through four. And also considering coming back from most of the pre-pandemic, if you will, de-densifying. So they did a lot of work on that, as did our summer laborers, to get schools ready. Other municipal departments, of course, support us during the summertime and throughout the school year. Shrewsbury Police Department, of course, is always there for us, and especially at the beginning of the school year with traffic control. And a shout out to our school resource officers, Mark Hester and Sean Valier especially, who help us with that. And also, even things like the Engineering Department, I put a picture here. This is a new crosswalk that was installed on Municipal Drive over the summertime. Still has some finishing work to be done, and DPW is also involved in putting in the signage. So on Municipal Drive here, we have a new sidewalk on kind of the south side there or the left side of Municipal Field that didn't exist before, and a new crosswalk coming over closer to the school. So it'll be safer for our students at Patton School, who access Municipal Field for physical education in the fair weather every day. They can push that button, it lights up, and so we're very grateful to the Engineering Department for pulling that off during the summertime as well. So that's some of the kind of operational aspects of reopening, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Alex, any questions or comments?
Thank you for the report. I don't think people really understand the logistical challenges all the time and how everything had to come together like that, so I appreciate you sharing that with the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, Ms. Clodder will give a brief overview of the work we did last year. We had an unusual opening to the school year. Typically, we have an opening day for staff, and then we run three days for students, and then a professional development day for staff on the Friday prior to Labor Day. This year, just due to the feeling that we wanted to have a little more time up front with our staff, we moved the traditional October Professional Development Day up into that first week. So we actually had Monday and Tuesday days with staff. Tuesday, I'm sorry, Wednesday and Thursday were days of school for students, and then Friday was another Professional Development Day. These Professional Development Days are incredibly important for the quality of our school district and for how we can continue to build the capacity of our very outstanding staff, who are always trying to get better. But Ms. Clodder will give some details as to what we did last week.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. As a reminder, our strategic priorities drive our planning in all areas, and this is especially true for Professional Development. Most recently, we focused on two priorities, namely, learning environments where everyone's success matters and the enhanced well-being of all. And the idea is that one of the best ways to support our students and their learning is to boost the capacity of our educators. So if you picture the goal of inclusive schools, where all students connect with their teachers and feel unconditionally accepted and achieve academic success on the horizon, then that's our destination. PD opportunities are the pit stops, where we kind of tune our skills, and learning together is the fuel that kind of keeps us going and engaged as teachers and learners. So our progress thus far is kind of fueled by our last opportunities together to kind of continue the issues we focused on in the past and then to go a little deeper in some of our learning. So I shared as part of our update on DBIE, which stands for Diversity, Belonging, Inclusion, and Equity, a timeline to illustrate the specific steps we took with regard to advancing equity in our district and professional development was one of them. So learning centered on diversity and belonging continued as part of our improvement cycle. So you can see at the bottom, the cycle of learning, planning, acting, assessing, and listening. That's particularly helpful in terms of structuring professional development opportunities, because after every Professional Development Day, solicit information from staff about how it was helpful, what they need next. And so in thinking about advancing equity, that definitely emphasized our plan on having Dr. Amonte Jackson return to us. Our continued work with her was a purposeful through line, because every member of the staff contributes to the sense of belonging that students and families feel. We felt it was really critical that everyone continued to be included in the training. So Dr. Amonte Jackson spoke to the entire district. We shut down central office so that every member of the district could be present to hear her presentation. So she presented on Zoom on August 31st, but although thanks to the good work of our district leaders, we organized small groups and collaborated so that people were able to pause and reflect during the presentation, which was two hours, and discuss key points and think about the application of the practice to their roles. In this last presentation, she focused on the difference between diversity, where we appreciate the richness of variability among the people in our schools, including race, but also language differences, gender differences, socioeconomic status, and neurodiversity, to attending to making sure everyone feels seen and valued in our schools. So belonging, different from diversity, requires that we act on our awareness by attending to and pronouncing student names correctly, by assessing the images in our curriculum, by looking at our walls, for example, and thinking about the learning environments that we craft for students. And one nugget of our learning with her is her description in depth of Richard Elmore's model of the instructional core. So the graphic here, that triangle, represents the idea that at the core of good instruction should be centered on experiences that connect students and teachers, connect students and materials, and work in concert with the materials that kids are using to learn so that they see themselves connecting to adults and also connected in the materials that they're using. The other part of that that was really important was she talked about the importance of adults in the community also feeling a sense of belonging, that adults can't think about how to empathize with students and structure experiences that engage them without also experiencing that sense of engagement in learning communities themselves. So she had us practice thinking through some of the specific concrete steps we would take to foster belonging among the staff and also then to think about how to translate that into classroom practice. So the other thing that we talked about was when we learned that some of our learners don't feel a sense of belonging, we have to act on that, but it's not always easy to know where to begin. Dr. Katie Novak's expertise is on universal design for learning, and that's the foundation of educational equity in learning environments, or classrooms. So she addressed the question of instilling belonging from an instructional standpoint and what teachers need to know and be able to do in order to make that happen. So she talked about teaching and learning with professional staff, because the focus of her work was primarily on the classroom. And she emphasized the importance of effective teaching and the power of engaging students in the learning process, that students were capable of both identifying and surmounting barriers to learning in concert with teachers. So this next graphic here is intended to kind of think about the curb cut, as a curb cut really is critical to people who have mobility issues in terms of being able to access the sidewalk, but it also benefits many other people. It's useful if you're riding a bike as a young kid, it's helpful if you've got a stroller, but it's also really good if your legs are tired and you're looking for the way to access the sidewalk easily. And similarly, for universal design for learning, we can think about lessons with that same principle in mind. So if Dr. Novak had a catchphrase, it would be having firm goals and flexible means. In other words, teachers need to be really laser-focused on what students should know and be able to do, and firm in the belief that all students can reach those goals. But also, she encouraged us to question whether every student had to demonstrate their understanding in the same way. So if the goal is writing a speech, for example, everyone has to write a speech. In order to support our learners, teachers need to structure small groups and think about, where does John need to grow in his speech writing? Maybe that's different from what Sandy needs. But if the goal is communicating an opinion, there's lots of ways to do that, and writing a speech is just one of those ways to demonstrate students' understanding. So she really emphasized that we grow student agency when we give them a chance to make and learn from the choices they make when they're practicing their skills or when they're demonstrating their skills. And this next slide kind of goes into detail about what the UDL framework is all about. So essentially, it encourages us to think about planning lessons with variability as the rule, not the exception. So even though the curriculum and the learning goals might be the same, we recognize that there's a lot of diversity of learners in our classroom, and we have to think about having flexible ways of getting at those learning goals. The belief firmly that all kids can reach high standards, this is not a matter of changing the standards or watering down the curriculum, but really thinking about where are the learning curb cuts that we need to craft in our lesson plans? And if we do that, if we remove barriers and engage kids in doing that, not only will we have more kids achieve success, both socially, emotionally, and academically, but also we'll have kids become better able to advocate for themselves and to learn from making poor choices, because that's what kids do sometimes. So a skillful teacher would say, you know, I noticed you learned to write a speech by doing this. How did that work for you? What if you tried this instead? And that is connected to another one of our strategic priorities, which is connected learning for a complex world. So it comes back to that thinking of how do we build students in terms of their ability to advocate for what they need and become empowered as learners? So as next steps, we'll include more self-paced professional development options, and that begins in December. But so far, I've only described district PD, and I'd be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge the hard work that our principals and building administrators did in preparing for building-based professional development as well. So we had two chunks of professional learning time, the first on the afternoon of opening day, and the second last Friday afternoon after Katie Novak presented to the professional staff. And in grades pre-K to six, professional learning focused on educators fostering belonging with students and families. So educators had different choices to revisit the Castle Wheel and social-emotional learning lessons, to draft plans for their first-class meetings, to reflect on their strategies for engaging families and welcoming students back to school. At Oak, and the high school staff participated in Character Strong Training. Character Strong is the social-emotional learning curriculum used at both of those levels. And the other piece is, we're all learning all the time, myself included. So my most recent aha was, hmm, variability should be a factor in planning for adult learning as well. So while we have a mix of opportunities for people to hear the same message at the same time so that we can all process that understanding, as a leadership team, we've also been grappling with how to structure professional learning the way we want educators to plan for the students in their classrooms. So how do we have flexible means? Well, we work towards those firm goals. That's my presentation. It's always a pleasure to talk about teaching and learning, and the time goes by like that. I am ready to field any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Clodder?
Questions? Mr. Pouchett?
Just a few comments. First of all, I want to thank you for the presentation, which I think was very insightful. I think it's always helpful for the community and families to see, get a sense of what happens in professional development, because of course, from the outside looking in, it might just look like a day off, and to actually have a sense of all of the value that's generated through that work, I think is very helpful. I also want to commend you for keeping the focus on educator excellence and keeping the focus on some priorities that have been longtime priorities. I know that the pandemic has forced a lot of things to the back burner, and I know that a lot of the attention and the focus is on masks and logistics and all of that. And to actually remember that there are still teachers and staff and students that were holding to very, very high standards, and that we expect them to continue to improve in their practice, I think is important. So kudos.
Thank you.
So I think this is exciting to see all this customization and moving the students along at the speed that they go. I wonder whether it slows the whole class down, because you've got 20 different agendas going on at the same time, or whether it makes the job of the teacher a little more dizzying? I would imagine that the easiest thing to do is to line them up and to put it on the blackboard. And so to do what you're describing, which is exciting, makes the job, it seems, a little more challenging. How's that going?
Yeah, so when Dr. Novak talked about universal design for learning, she talked about the analogies for universal design. And she asked people to imagine kind of the casserole, right? If I was going to have a dinner party and I invited you all and I served a casserole, tuna noodle casserole, if you want to get really specific, which to me was, who would that not work for? It's a lovely meal, my grandmother's recipe, right? You'd all be engaged, love coming over to my house. Right? We can easily imagine all the people it wouldn't work for. And sometimes, teaching to the middle is kind of like that. So how could we redesign the dinner party? Well, I might have a pasta station and lots of different options. So it is more work to do that than to put a casserole together and put it in the oven, but that's work worth doing. And I think for teachers, the nuance that she helped them to see was, this is not about making individual meals for 25 different kids. This is about thinking about, how can we predict that there will be variability and plan for that? So for kids that are going to face this barrier, what might we do? For kids that are going to face this barrier, what might we do? So let's think about our old plan, because it was probably a good one, and think about, what's one barrier that might still remain in that plan that we could do something about? And then over time, those plans get more effective and more differentiated, for lack of a better word, but it's not 25 different plans. And it's also, the difference, I think, between universal design and differentiation is, it's not the teacher's job alone to think about how to meet students' needs, it's the teacher's job to engaging students and thinking about, what's the barrier you're facing? How could I help you remove that barrier? And so kids are part of that, part of those making choices. So teachers have to think more planfully at the outset about what those choices might be. What are the firm goals and what are we going to flex on? But ultimately, I think we engage kids in that work and grow both skill sets. So it's not just the teacher doing the hard work. And one of the questions, as a principal, I always used to ask teachers is, who's working hard at here? We need to release some responsibility to students so that they have that opportunity to learn and grow. And of course, teaching is hard work, and teachers make a million decisions all the time. I don't want to pretend teaching is easy, because I don't believe it is. But I do think teachers are hungry to think about, how do we move forward to this aspiration of more equitable spaces in classrooms? And this is the way to do that.
Do we have much of the way of technology to help us along this path? Various bits of software that will engage the student and take them as far as they can go?
We do.
Or make the evaluations that are done by teachers more efficient?
We do. We've got adaptive software that can help us. We're at the beginning of stages of using that and thinking about how it helps drive instruction, but there are tools like that that can be useful.
In the budget?
It's in the budget.
It's funny that we're talking about this. This weekend, we were talking about when we were learning to read and aging myself. You know, when I was in school, it was like Spot, Dick, and Jane books, and everybody, Dale and I remember this, and everyone had, you know, you were taught in one way, and I knew how to read, and I had to sit there, and you go around the class, and it was just so frustrating, because if you knew how, you still had to just sit there. So we're providing these variable experiences for students, but we've gone way beyond that, I think. So it's more exciting, we're fitting the needs, but as Dale mentioned, you do worry about, it's a lot for teachers, too, to do that. So we're providing them with different tools through PD, which is exciting. And I think the other thing that I'm happy with the redistricting is that we're And I think the other thing that I'm happy with the redistricting is that we're seeing better class sizes throughout, at least in our elementary schools, where we're learning some of these really basic, you know, learning to read, our, you know, math skills that were hopefully with these tools and giving students these experiences. We're going to set them on a better path as we build through. So I think this is really exciting work, and thank you. You do tremendous work to, you know, we're so happy, Amy, that you're in this role. And I think every time you come and present, there's always something new. So I think this is just really good work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I won't belabor my colleagues' enthusiasm. I share it as well. And I think this, the reason I imagine most of us got involved with being on school committee is for the, is for thinking about, like, what's happening in the classroom? And how do we, how do we, how do we help there? And while we spend time on lots of other matters, this, you can obviously see our enthusiasm of, and I think, I just want to sort of really reflect on the, one of the things that I found most interesting when I first joined the school committee in this district was the, not that I've been on a school committee in any other district, but it was my early conversations with the members of the administrative team and how every single one of those first conversations went back to our core values and our strategic priorities. And that at every moment, we're saying, what is, what is our North Star? And what are we working towards? And as you began, you said, going back to our priorities, and here's what we're building on, and here's what we're trying to do. And you know, repetition is good for us adults, too. Like, what are we doing here? Why, what is this all about? And certainly, the way that we are lifting up, you know, social-emotional learning and belonging and universal design, I couldn't be sort of more proud, but also really happy to see the inclusion of all staff and the recognition that this is not simply a role for our, our teaching staff, our parent profession staff. Our administrative staff make a huge difference for our, for our young people. And so the idea that we're all, sort of all in this together to kind of learn both lots of, lots of new skills and new opportunities, but the curb cut effect, I'm a big fan of. I'm glad you mentioned it. And the idea, it was for me, the light bulb that went off in this difference, probably about seven or eight years ago, of the difference between equality and equity, right? And what is it? And what everyone gets? And everyone gets the same? And everyone gets Dick, Jane, and Spot books? But like, wait, that's not getting everybody. And the, and the idea that when we adapt for those who maybe historically have been more vulnerable or didn't kind of catch it, that we in fact catch a whole bunch more people. Because it turned out, just being in line at the blackboard, didn't work for a lot of kids. You hit a bunch in the middle, but it wasn't the best way, right? And there are, there are better ways. So just really impressive. And I, I hope, while we're throwing a lot at our, at all of our educators to kind of pick up, and there's unfortunately lots of buzzwords in here, but I think there's also lots of really great, great material. So I, I hope that they, they feel the enthusiasm that we see in your presentation about like, where we are trying to ultimately get to, and all of, that all of these pieces keep building on each other. Because I certainly see the path, and I hope, I hope they do, too. So, but thank you for all the efforts.
Yeah, I specifically want to call out the educators that have been involved in the co-teaching initiative, because we talk about professional development in lots of different ways, and partly, it's episodic. You know, we have these district PD days and these moments where we ask them to engage in self-paced learning as well. But I think there's lots of opportunities for job-embedded PD. And one of the things that's been happening for some time is that as Meg Del Cito and the Student Services Team have advanced co-teaching, some of the same principles of co-teaching are also a play for universal design. So while it, some of the terminology, and thank you for catching me on the buzzwords, because I hate that I do that, and I'm working on it, is new. The, the efforts to get back to skillful teaching and to think more broadly about that, that's not new. So I do think it can feel a little overwhelming, but I think when people look at some of the language from the strategic priorities, and they look at what we were engaged in pre-pandemic, it's like, oh yeah, we were working at that. And that's how I hope they'll feel, because certainly, we're at the beginning stages, but not all of it is new.
Yeah, just add, I mean, I appreciate that we always stay grounded on our strategic priorities, but as, as well as just making sure that everyone's success matters in all of this. Amidst all the challenges we've had in the last 18 months, it's just really great to see the evolution of these programs, and also just giving the public some insight as to what professional days are and the value that our staff receives from them. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to try to summarize here a bit and just end this, and you know, there's a lot here. And certainly, I want to start by thanking everyone who presented tonight. And you can see how, you know, Noel's work around health and nursing, Patrick's work around logistics and operations, Amy's work around professional development, and equally, you know, other members of the leadership team, you know, just an enormous amount of work this summer to have a successful opening. And I am very, very proud that we had a very successful opening. And just these next slides I'll go through quickly. Well, just first, you know, again, our primary goal, you know, we've met this goal so far. We're very early in the school year, but we're meeting this goal. We've got kids in school, we've got 6,000 kids coming to school every day and learning. We've had minimal disruptions, and we are using all these different strategies to mitigate the risk. But just these last several slides, I had the opportunity, on the first couple of days of school, to visit each school, took a couple of pictures. I put them up on Twitter. People can see that either on my Twitter account or on our homepage. They're, they're all put there as well. But I think, you know, you can't see the photographs, you know, the faces too clearly, because the masks are on, but lots of smiling faces, you know, whether it's the first slide here, which was Parker Road Preschool, some of these kids, first time they've been physically in school ever, which is exciting. Coolidge, lots of thumbs up, there was a third grade class there. In Floral Street School, hard for me to believe that it's beginning its 25th year of existence, which means it's my 20th, my 25th year here in Shrewsbury Public Schools. But again, third grade class there, very excited to be there. The next one, Patton, again, really, kids were just learning. It was the very first day of school, and they were just engaged with some great learning that was happening in that particular class. Lots of the classes that I was able to visit with Dr. Lusat. Spring Street, kindergartners and fourth graders alike, busy. Again, that was the second day of school on Thursday. Sherwood, Oak, you know, lots of thumbs up. You know, you can see just the, you know, kids, it's good to see kids not all just in rows. You know, that's a very deliberate decision we made to make sure we're using instructional strategies that work for learning while, you know, trying to do the distancing as we can, as it's pragmatic, as Ms. Freeman said earlier. At the high school, that's a picture from the bridge above the main lobby of the, what's known as the senior plaza. Senior privilege to go outside and eat lunch, and they were taking advantage of that on a very nice day. But these last few slides, not only was it a very successful opening, it was a very special opening, because this was the opening of the Beal School, for which I am enormously grateful to the community of Shrewsbury for providing what is an absolutely remarkable building for our students to learn, and it's going to be there for decades, providing an outstanding environment for education. Here's a couple of shots of kids walking in school for the first time, getting off the bus with Mr. Girardi, the principal, and Ms. Hoi, the assistant principal. This, again, just couldn't be more grateful to Shrewsbury community for this incredible place for learning. The second slide shows one of the, one of the classrooms, which are just so well-appointed. And there's also, you can see a distant shot there of the main lobby. And in this last slide, it's a little more of a close-up of the massive mural that well-known, nationally, world-known children's illustrator and author Peter Reynolds put together, which is just stunning. And as I put it, and when I sent this out, I had the opportunity to have a conversation with the young man on the left. His name is Prince. And I was asking him about what he thought of the, the school as he was looking around the lobby, waiting to go down to his first-grade classroom. He said, this looks like a place where we can be heroes. And I thought that was just the quote of the day, and really captured certainly what our partners, our designers, Lamro Pagano Associates, the construction management company, Fontaine Brothers, PMA, our project management consulting company, worked so well together with the Beal Building Committee, and the Beal administration and staff just did an incredible job making this really work. And we had an extremely successful opening. Again, across the board, preschool through grade 12 was outstanding, but particularly special, opening this wonderful new school. And with that, if there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them. We appreciate your patience, but I think you can tell, there's an awful lot that goes into making this work, and you can see why I'm just so proud to be the superintendent of such an outstanding school district.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, any final comments or questions? Mr. Palance?
Two comments. First of all, I just want to extend my compliments to the administration, staff at every level, students, and families throughout the district. This was an extremely successful opening. Although I recognize that obviously, this wasn't the first opening of a school year where we had to contend with COVID-19. It, there were still so many things that could have gone wrong, and they either didn't or they got handled. I was impressed listening to Ms. Freeman and Mr. Collins and Ms. Pauder talk about some of the work that was done. It was thoroughly organized. The planning was fantastic, far-sighted. The execution was flawless. So just my compliments to everyone involved, and that includes students and families who were a part certainly of making that successful. The comment that I wanted to offer was just to echo what Dr. Sawyer said. It was very moving to see so many photos of the new Beal School open. And I just want to thank again the voters of the town of Shrewsbury who made a very important decision to invest in the community, not once, but twice. They made that decision for the building in 2018, and then in May of this year, that we could offer the staff and programming necessary. So my thanks again to the community. It was just very, very powerful to actually see students walking into that building. There were moments where we weren't, we weren't sure that that was going to look quite like that, and it did. So thank you to the community.
Any additional comments?
I do have to say, I'm just struck by the depth of the report that you provided over the last hour, between the COVID response and actually seeing it in action. But you know, how you put together the opening week of schools is outstanding. I like the breakdown of the data, as we saw in terms of the COVID cases, you know, from transportation to food services to curriculum. I just think it's very well done, and appreciate the level of detail and the involvement and the entire leadership team and principals. I will echo the sentiments of Mr. Palance. I will, when I saw those pictures of opening day at Beal, I was struck at how far we've come in a short amount of time. In five months, five months ago, we were in a much different place. So I want to thank the community for everything that they've done to support public schools. So thank you very much. Okay, on to the next item on our agenda. It is a time-scheduled appointment with regards to American Rescue Plan for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funding. The discussion, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins will present a report regarding the requirements for application for the third round of federal pandemic response funding for education. With that, I will hand it over to Dr. Sawyer.
I can take that, sure. And this is just to summarize briefly the memorandum that you have in your materials this evening. The American Rescue Plan, known as ARPA, but is what the American Rescue Plan, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, which is known as the ESER Fund. And this is known as ESER III. This is the third round of funding that we've received from the federal government or will receive, assuming all goes well. The first round, early on, was known as a part of the CARES Act. We received $162,000 directly to provide different, essentially, things to deal with the operational part of the pandemic. Those ESER I funds are spent entirely on personal protective equipment and COVID-19 surveillance testing. ESER II funds came next. That was another batch of funds from the federal government that was part of the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. We received a little over $557,000. Those dollars were used for procuring additional furniture we needed last year to reopen school in the spring in order to do all the distancing, furniture storage that was mentioned earlier, tents, technology hardware, and also provided some required special education services that we had to provide as compensatory services because of the school shutdowns. So they were very, very valuable funds. Those funds are spent out. There is the potential that we may be able to access by reclassifying some of them. Mr. Collins is working closely with his counterparts on the municipal side of town leadership, in particular, Mary Thompson, the town accountant, because there have been some rule changes that have happened over the course of the last few months where certain expenses have become eligible, that communities have expended through the federal emergency management FEMA funding that is a part of the coronavirus piece from the federal government as well. And again, if that happens, we'll obviously be happy to make good use of those funds. And I know the town is doing excellent work trying to make sure they parse out all the funds that they have on the municipal side, as well as being able to stretch our funds on the school department's side. This third round of funds, which is known as ESER III, is a larger apportionment of funding. It's about $1.23 million. It does, however, come with many more strings attached than the first two batches. And so we have to go through a process we'll be going through over the next couple of weeks that we've already begun. These funds have to be procured through an application to the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DESI. Their responsibility as a state agency, the federal Department of Education runs these funds through the various state departments of education in order to distribute the funding according to the rules they've established. So we will have to make an application to DESI for these funds and indicate how we intend to use them. As with any other grant, we'll be able to make amendments if we need to down the line if we determine there's a better use, but you know, we want to, we typically try to stick with what our original intent is, assuming that all goes well. This funding can actually be spent through the deadline of September 30th, 2024. So there's a three-year window here that we have to utilize these, and we do think it would be wise to stretch these over the next couple of school years, at least in, at least in some ways. And so that's, that is a final deadline for us to expend those, those funds. Part of the requirements is that there has to be outreach to stakeholders. This meeting is part of that. We will be sending out later this week a survey to the community and to families and to staff as well, that will also be specifically communicating with our collective bargaining unions, as well as potentially other different community groups, such as parent organizations, the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, our English Language Learner Parent Advisory Committee, and so forth. These are all federal requirements. Of course, it's good practice to solicit feedback, in which we do a lot as a school district, of course. And we need, we will be bringing, based on the feedback and based on the work of the leadership team, we will bring a plan forward to you at your next meeting on September 22nd for approval, that we then can file the application by the deadline of October 4th. The initial phase of getting feedback were the two thought exchange, online exchanges we put forward in August. One was to families and one was to staff. There was actually quite a lot of consensus in terms of feedback around people, what people saw as important for this coming year, particularly around the area of student mental health, as well as, as well as just overall mental health for all of our students and staff within our organization. And that's something that I think we should be paying attention to. We'll be soliciting some feedback around that as one potential bucket, if you will, for funding from this $1.2-plus million that we will be able to access. And you know, we're working to identify, you know, what we might be able to do, you know, to add some supports for mental and social-emotional health. Along with that, it's important to note that 20% of the funds, at least, have to be set aside to address, quote unquote, "lost instructional time" through the implementation of so-called evidence-based interventions, and to make sure that those respond not only to social and emotional needs, also academic needs, and to look very specifically at underrepresented groups such as low-income students, children with disabilities, English learners, racial and ethnic minorities, students who might be experiencing homelessness, or children who are in foster care. And that is something that we are paying a lot of attention to and thinking about, who are our most vulnerable students? We did some identification of students who were behind the curve a bit. We provided two weeks of summer academy programming for them, free of charge this past summer. That costs a little bit north $100,000. That's actually something that's quite likely as part of this plan we'll bring to you, because this funding can actually be retroactive back to last spring and include expenses we had this past summer, which will, of course, will free up those $100,000 to for something else that we need to be doing this year to support students. So that's something that is an important element of this. And so another bucket, we'll be looking, I think, at the core areas of reading and mathematics. Where is it that we need to provide some additional supports for students, especially those who might have been affected by the fact that the last couple of years have been interrupted in terms of more typical school years? And then finally, looking specifically not only last summer, but a way to stretch these dollars and look at continuing to provide some summer programming over the next couple of summers that will be addressing the needs of students. One thing that I think I've read multiple places and multiple, you know, certainly good sources is that it certainly would be naive to think that everything that has been affected by the pandemic as far as education is going to be fixed by, you know, January 2022, or the end of this school year. Some of these things are going to linger. So thinking about how we can responsibly, you know, front-load some of this investment to make an impact right away, that could last over time, and then build that capacity into our budget over time, use it as seed money, and where is it that we might want to and where is it that we might want to look at this as providing some additional summer support or support after school or during school vacations and so forth over the coming couple of years. So that's the landscape. I wanted to bring it forward to you this evening so the public understood what we're doing. We're going to be sending out, again, more specific information to get feedback, but this is an opportunity for the school committee members to provide any feedback that you have to us, whether or not you think those buckets around mental and social emotional health, addressing learning loss around English and reading and mathematics in particular, looking at bolstering some, you know, out-of-school time during the summers or other time in order to try to achieve that as well. Those are some of the initial, that's some of the initial thinking that's come out of the leadership team. We want feedback on these things from our constituents, but certainly are interested in your feedback this evening as we begin this couple of week process to put together a plan to bring forward to you at your next meeting. So with that, I know Mr. Collins can answer any technical questions you might have around the grant itself. I'd be happy to answer anything or any other leaders here relative to how we might effectively spend these important funds.
Great, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, questions? I'm Pepper.
Certainly, the opportunity to have some funds to sort of strategically invest and think about a couple of years is not usually an opportunity we have, so it's, I'll thank our colleagues at the federal level, though it does seem like there are lots of strings for us to work through. I wonder, I'm thinking about, and thank you for sharing the reference guide from DESI. I did not read the whole 50-page, so I'm looking for a little, I appreciate the cheat sheet. The 20% set aside on instructional loss time, I noted that summer academies seem like they make a lot of sense, keeping that, something like that going, potentially extending it to something longer, though I know it's not necessarily that easy to ask our same teaching staff to want to teach all summer, so appreciate that limitation. But I'm wondering about the idea of comprehensive after-school and extended day. And so I am thinking about historically how we have run extended day is, while many of our staff move into that program and I hear only wonderful things, my kids finally got off the waitlist as COVID hit, so we've never actually participated, but I had always understood that to be more providing, you know, good spaces for kids, but to function more like child care rather than instructional time. And so I wonder what you think about is that as an opportunity? But also the idea of after-school programs and the after-school programs, at least at the elementary level that we've tended to run, and I'm forgetting our acronym, is it ASAP, After-School?
Activity Programs.
Thank you. That those have tended to be fee-based programs, you know, chess club and an art program and some of those. And so are those, are we trying to think sort of creatively how some of those programs potentially could imply or apply, or are you really kind of thinking in the summer model more discreetly?
I don't think it's necessarily or, it could be and.
Okay.
I think the summer is important to look at, and I think, you know, I know in a conversation I had with Ms. Clutter recently, talking about how we can take some successful models we already have, we already have a very successful summer enrichment program, we weren't able to run the last couple of summers unfortunately, but, you know, something that is traditionally been strong with this sort of, you know, academic, you know, more summer academy model where we're targeting specific students. And how do you potentially blend those things together, where there may be some things that are highly motivational for students who they want to participate in, sometimes students who we, you know, are targeting for interventions, you know, in order to help them move closer to, you know, learning standards, you know, may not be particularly interested in spending more time in school in the summertime or after-school for that matter. And depending on, you know, the situation, that sometimes that's an access issue, sometimes there are issues relative to other choices that families are making in terms of how they may be spending their time in the summer or after-school. And, you know, those are some things that, you know, it may, I think it behooves us to be asking for this feedback and looking for questions about what people might be looking for. I think that Karen Eisen does a wonderful job with our Extended School Care Program and the folks who run that. You know, there certainly are elements of that that are certainly good learning, there are certainly opportunities for kids to complete homework, there are definitely some enrichment activities that are certainly similar, almost similar to what we do in our summer enrichment program. But, you know, finding ways to either target it, maybe in conjunction with that program, or, you know, running something separately, but that we still are able to access space like we do with the ASAP program, which runs essentially concurrently in parallel with the Extended School Care Program. And students from the Extended School Care Program certainly can participate in those programs too, just while they're on site. So it's an excellent question, and I think that's something that we're going to need to take some time. I think between now and two weeks from now, we make the application, I think we'll probably be in somewhat broader strokes, but I think that, I know Ms. Clutter and her team will be looking at, you know, what are the ways that we can combine kind of the best of both worlds as best we can to try to make things engaging for kids, but also provide opportunities for them, especially those students who need to get, to move along farther, because there may have been some learning loss, and also not losing sight of kids who can benefit from enrichment that can actually accelerate where they're going. And that's a word I know has been tossed around a lot at the state and the federal level, and I think it, you know, not to be misinterpreted as we're going to rush, rush, rush kids to kind of somehow fix them, but rather looking at this of like, let's focus on what's what grade level standards are, and there may be some holes because of what happened the last couple of years, but how can we build with kind of enriching experiences to get them where they need to be? So that's, it's an excellent point.
Can I just ask a follow-up, something for us to consider? I can certainly say that for the young people that I know, the things like the ASAP programs have sparked interest and curiosity. I remember chess, chess became a thing in my house for 18 months because someone did an after-school four-week session on chess, right? And, but, but we do know that fees, fees keep, are one of the barriers that keeps certain, certain young people from engaging and families from making those choices, and certainly as you, as you tick off some of the potentially more vulnerable populations that the fund should be targeted at, that is a concern. But I'd also suggest that we think about some of, as you mentioned, but we think about it sort of holistically, some of the other barriers and other reasons parents don't always do those, is you have to do parent pickup, right? And so buses aren't available, and so the other things, you know, what about snacks after school, and you have to pack a snack? And so those other little things that might make, just add, make that road a little bit more difficult to move on, but that I think are part of what make our buildings exciting places to be, that there's lots of opportunities to spark your interest in something. I think there's a lot of potential in here, and so, thank you.
Sure. Ms. Rice.
I think Lindsay raises an excellent question about this kind of and/or, because if we're looking at a summer institute type of a program, I think we actually lose another year of time for somebody who may have learning loss if we wait till next summer. And I don't know what the benchmark is for looking at students and where this loss is, but I think the sooner we get to students who need to gain some skills in reading or math, the better. So again, I don't know how that needs to come into play, but I think it's something that needs to be looked at sooner rather than later. So if there is something that can be built in, like Lindsay suggested, to after-school, and it might be a logistical issue for some families, or it might be something that's easier for them staying than having a summer program, so I think that was an excellent suggestion. And again, I don't know what that benchmark is, but I think there's going to be a lot of students who might need a little catching up, and it might not be a long-term issue. It might be something that helps them get over some hump that they missed last year, and it isn't a long-term thing, but I think it needs to happen quicker.
Mr. Palance.
Just to highlight what seems to be the central theme of the community feedback that was solicited in August, which is the mental health and well-being piece. Obviously, this is a district that was doing a lot of innovative things on student wellness prior to the pandemic. I think it goes without saying that the pandemic obviously exacerbated that quite a bit, and, you know, that was most evident, I think, last year when students were, a lot of students were remote. But I think it's important to note that now that, you know, just because we have students back, the world is not back to normal, and there's still a lot of isolating components in our students' lives. So I would just like to see if we could explore potentially looking at some of the already very innovative approaches we were taking to wellness and looking at those through the lens of COVID and seeing where maybe some of these resources can be used on that front.
Dr. Mc.
So just to build on the idea of the summer institute that they had last summer, it would be nice to know what was learned from that. It was, it was a fairly modest offering. It was a fairly small percentage of the school population that was able to take advantage of it. But it might be an opportunity to use these funds and what was learned there to build something bigger that can not only mitigate the losses that occurred during COVID, but build something into the system that is going to serve us into the future. My understanding is that a significant proportion of the disparities that exist between those who are socio-economically well-off and those who are not exist in the summer, how summers are spent. And so for us to know better how our students are spending their summers, so that we know going in what is being taken advantage of, and also for us to know where the students are the weakest, so the needs assessment and assessment of the terrain as to what people are already doing and the experience gained from the summer institute, maybe the building blocks to put something together that is more widely available, targets the people who need it in the ways that they need it, and helps us with COVID, and also helps us going forward to flatten the playing field.
Thank you.
From my perspective, I think if we can get that kind of front-loading, as you described, for that immediate impact, whether that be after-school programming, I think that would be beneficial, but also looking to the long-term for summer programming as well to carry that momentum with whatever we build, you know, say it's after-school program, into next summer, and also agree certainly with the consensus amongst the feedback we received around mental health programs, both for staff and students.
Thank you. That's helpful comments and suggestions, and those are things we'll certainly take into account as we think about what we can design, at least for the purpose of the grant application, which again will probably be more broad strokes and then with some potential specifics, and then we will be able to move forward and certainly report out on what we're doing and what the impact, and that's something that we need to do with this grant in particular, is we need to report out on what kind of measurable impact this funding, you know, whatever we did with the funding had. Those are some of the strings that are attached, which are understandable, it may be more bureaucratic than we'd like, but the concept certainly, we agree with the accountability measures that are in place. So we appreciate that. We'll be bringing something back to you in two weeks for you to consider, and thank you for the feedback.
Great, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is under New Business. It's regarding bullying statistics. It's the annual report, Bullying Prevention and Intervention Policy adopted in December 2010, indicates that the superintendent will provide a school committee an update with regards to frequency of bullying behaviors during the prior school year and to update the committee regarding steps being taken in the schools to minimize such behaviors. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. This is an annual report that we give and that we provide to the school committee per policy. It is something, I think, in terms of, you know, last year, I would not want to overinterpret the data, because last year was a very different year, of course, with the hybrid model and a very significant percentage of our students who were entirely remote. Just to remind the committee and those watching that the legal standard in Massachusetts among schools for bullying is essentially a high standard in that to be defined as specifically bullying. It involves repeated behaviors that cause physical or emotional harm or both, and so it needs to be a repeated situation. Of course, there are times where students don't treat each other well or nicely, and our staff intervene at different levels of seriousness, depending on what the situation is and the age of the students. Obviously, we try to take a very educational instructional approach to how, to help kids learn how to behave appropriately. But as far as specific allegations of bullying that we received, last year, we received 10 reports in that of those 10, two at the elementary level, five at the middle level, and three at the high school level were all investigated according to our policy. Only one actually qualified as technically as bullying. That said, certainly in those cases, you know, if they weren't repeated, or there were, you know, shades different that didn't qualify as bullying but was inappropriate behavior, they were certainly dealt with appropriately by the school administration. In terms of, you know, the bigger picture, I think that we need to continue to look at how we can, you know, focus on issues relative to promoting a sense of belonging, positive and respectful climates and cultures in our schools. It's something I think that we already are very strong at, but particularly this year with students coming back into schools, and so far we're seeing, you know, very positive results. You know, I've certainly read things where there've been some difficulties cited in other parts of the country, where students may have come back to school sooner than we did, relative to students who have been out of school for a long time, having trouble adjusting or readjusting. That has not been something that's been on my screen. We're going to be paying close attention, of course, to that as we get a little bit out of the honeymoon period of returning to school. We're also being very intentional around things like developing or rather instituting the Character Strong Program at the middle and the high school level at Oak and Shrewsbury High School, combining that with what's known as an advisory, where a faculty member works with a smaller group of students periodically throughout the school year to provide a little more sense of community and smaller, making sure that students are known and seen. These are all things that we can do that were, you know, overall will not only affect bullying, but the overall culture and climate of our schools. And then finally, I would just mention again that I know it's in your report, that there is a, on the, a flag on the top of our homepage called Submit a School Safety Tip, that is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to submit something anonymously, that we will pick up and investigate if there's a concern, having anything to do with the safety of our students in our schools. There's usually a handful of, you know, reports brought, you know, I think there's been 11 since last year's report. You know, a few were related to bullying, kind of a general sense, but everything that comes through there is investigated and resolved based on whatever information is provided. So again, there's different tools we have in place, and it's something that we're committed to continuing to try to provide the most positive, respectful school communities that we can. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions the committee has.
Colleagues, any questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is also under New Business. It's the appointment of the superintendent as representative to Aspen Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. For background, the mission of Aspen Valley Collaborative is to provide effective and efficient services to meet current and evolving needs of members, communities, to promote student success and community integration. The ABC Board of Directors meets monthly during the school year and more often as needed. Each year, the committee must vote to appoint the superintendent as representative to the Aspen Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. Any comments, Dr. Sawyer?
Just for those watching who are not familiar, the Aspen Valley Collaborative is a consortium of several local central mass school districts that essentially pool resources to create, it's an entity that is, provides programming that individual districts might not be able to provide on their own in a cost-effective manner, particularly around special education programming. It also provides opportunities for leaders in different roles to have job-alike groups and to do collaboration across districts, and it's a professional development outlet as well. And the way, under state law, you know, there has to be a board of directors with representatives from each school district, and for the Aspen Collaborative, it's a superintendent from each district is appointed and serves as the member of the board, and that's something that now will be serving on in my 13th year, I believe. I have been the chair of that board in the past and the vice chair. It's an excellent group of superintendents who work closely with the leadership of the collaborative, and it's important work and something that we make a significant commitment to. So, but would appreciate, this is a, part of the law is we have to be appointed every year, so ask that you do that again for this coming school year.
Great, any questions or comments before we call for a vote? So I need a motion that the committee vote to appoint Dr. Joseph Sawyer, Superintendent of Schools, as its representative to the Aspen Valley Collaborative Board of Directors for the 2021-2022 school year.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. Minutes from our school committee workshop held on September 1st of 2021 has been provided. Colleagues, any revisions? If there being none, they'll be approved as written. And finally, we do need to go into executive session tonight for the purposes of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law, hold on a second, sorry, any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22, F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, improving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education and Associates. the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And, oh, hold on.
Where deliberation?
Sorry. Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved.
Moved. And seconded, I need a roll call vote. Mr. Palance?
Aye.
Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Effernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.